I'd like to call the City Caucus meeting to order for Monday, May 27, 2025. Excuse me, Tuesday, May 27, 2025. We have 13 items for original consideration. If the clerk would please read item number one.
Item number one for original consideration. A resolution calling for a public hearing for the redirection of a portion of Chrysler Avenue from a two-way street to a one-way, from the intersection of Crane and Main Street to Ostrander Place.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number two.
Item number two for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a license and access easement with Maxon Alcohol Holdings LLC to allow construction of a new public amenity and scenic overlook at the Mulholland Harbor.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number three.
Item number three for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the home consortium with the city of Troy, the town of Colony, and the city of Schenectady to award $577,856 in home ARP funds to Altamont Program Incorporated.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to establish a custodial account.
Ms. Williams?
Roll call.
Roll call. Roll call on item number four. Item number five.
Item number five for original consideration. A resolution in support of neighborhood social security offices, Medicare, and Medicaid.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the commissioner of finance to deposit and increase the capital budget codes that have been designated specifically for the consolidated local streets and highway program, extreme winter recovery, pave New York, state touring route, and pave our potholes funding in the total amount of $4,948,462.08 to the capital budget code specifically for these fundings.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 71 Loraine Avenue for $3,000.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 458 Fourth Street for $1,500.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 538 Schenectady Street for $5,000.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of a vacant lot at 729 State Street for $7,000.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number 11.
Item number 11 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the sale of 2425 Consul Road for $81,600.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. Item number 12.
Item number 12 for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the settlement of a claim by Paul Dupree.
Discuss in committee without objection and on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13 for under contract and supply. A resolution awarding the bid and contract for the crack ceiling of select city streets 2025 to City Mark Striping LLC in the amount of $175,040.
Discuss in committee without objection on consent. If there's nothing more to come before the City Council Caucus asks for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Mr. Farley. All those in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting for Tuesday, May 27, 2025. And I'd like to call on Pastor Francis Rigobert, Rigobert, of the Zion Evangelistic Lutheran Church for the prayer invocation.
Lord God in heaven, we come before your throne of grace, not trusting in ourselves, but in your marvelous and gracious love, as it seeks expressions among us. We are looking for a way of reaching a consensus that will bring sanity and progress to a great city. Thank you for making us a beloved community, a worthy nation such as described in 1st Peter, Chapter 2, and verse 9, which says, "We are different; we are anointed; we are delivered; we are a chosen race, a royal priesthood, a holy nation." God's own people, in order that everybody else may look at you and see the way forward in faith, in hope, in love, and in mutual respect, and that you may proclaim to others the mighty actions of our God, who calls us out of darkness into light, out of fear into faith, out of frustration into salvation, out of war into peace, out of poverty into praise, out of brokenness into blessedness, out of violence into love, out of hopelessness into helpfulness, out of grief into joy, and out of death into life. We ask that you stir our hearts and imagination so we can see the reality of what we can become. May this be our identity; may this be our integrity; and may this be our destiny. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Ask call on Councilman Williams to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If the clerk could please complete the roll call.
Ms. D'Turro?
Present.
Mr. Farley?
Present.
Mr. Mancini?
Here.
Mr. Mutuvernas absent. Ms. Patrick?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
Ms. Porterfield?
Here.
I'd like to ask for approval of the minutes for May 12, 2025. Moved by Ms. Patrick, second by Mr. Williams. All in favor? Aye. If the clerk could please read any communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council from Tuesday, May 27, 2025. Under official, there were none; under general, there were none; and under petitions, there were none.
Let's call on council members to provide any committee reports. Any committee reports. Okay. This time, we will have privilege of the floor related to the legislative agenda, and I have one person who has signed up to speak, Rennie Glasgow.
Good evening. My name is Rennie Glasgow. I am the union representative, the vice president of AFGE Local 3343. That's the American Federation of Government Employees. I work in the Schenectady Social Security Office, and I'm pretty happy today that you have decided to take the opportunity and recognize that resolution. It is important, because what is happening in Schenectady, our local office, because of the recent changes and the dose cuts, we have lost nine employees in that office. Those nine employees put their services together. It's over 100 years of services. What has that done to the staff, and then what has that done to the community? It has weakened our ability to serve the public here in Schenectady and our neighboring cities that we provide services for. We have a robust system within the Social Security Administration. It takes an individual at least two to three years to understand and to be able to come out and process regular social security claims and certify benefits for individuals. And if you take away that level of experience from this office alone, you're killing our ability to serve the public. We have not been able to do our work as normal, and we want to say thank you, Schenectady, among other cities, among other locals that have stood up and adopted this resolution. This is going to go a far way. We intend to get this to Congress. I went to Congress and represented social security throughout the country and spoke on the committee and let them know what is happening, not just in Schenectady, but in all our offices throughout the nation. And with this, it will bolster our opportunity to maintain and to encourage that change that we're looking for. We want our agency to be funded. We want to be able to help our communities, and we are struggling to do that. We don't want people to be waiting on the phone for three hours like they do, and we don't want people to walk into our offices and be waiting for two, three hours like they have to do today. So, thank you again. Thank you very much, Schenectady. I applaud you. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment on the legislative agenda closed. At this time, ask for approval of the legislative consent agenda. Moved by Mr. Williams, second by Ms. Patrick. All in favor? Aye. We do have one item for roll call, and that item number four, if the clerk could please read.
Item number four for original consideration. A resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to establish a custodial account.
I need a motion for the roll call. Moved by Mr. Farley, and it's second by Mrs. Patrick. Okay. Is there any discussion on this item? Mr. Williams?
If individuals can recall from our conversation at our committee meeting, I took issue just at a lack of information around it. I just left with an unclear message, and I think in these types of instances, it's important to make sure that we are transparent but also forthcoming. I think if I myself am leaving with some reservations, I think it's a point of reflection to feel that there's not dismay that other individuals listening or tuning in might have the same uneasiness or uncertainty. But definitely with regards to the change in the agenda item, I think there is a certain way that information needs to be presented to the council. So I hope that individuals around the table feel the same and just have an authentic opportunity to just hear explicitly what is going on so we can make sure we are functioning with all the information on behalf of the residents of the city. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. D'Turro.
We did have a discussion at our committee meeting regarding this, but I see that a resolution has been put forth in front of us, and of course, I'm in favor of the resolution. The corporation council wouldn't have given us one unless it was legal and abiding for them to do this as such. I'd like to move forward with it because, again, it's another function that's going to be held downtown where there's going to be bans and bringing more people into the community, increasing revenue, and people visiting our city and getting the good experience that we have to offer, like the Nightmare on J Street that was held this past weekend. So, it was a simple ask by the mayor to create this account, and I don't know what corporation council did and decided to put the resolution through, but of course, I'm in favor of the resolution for this.
Ms. Patrick.
I too am in favor of the resolution. I'm excited about the fact that the city is going to be sponsoring another event that includes a lot of music and a great chance for folks to come out during the summer evenings and hear a lot of bands. And I see this as purely in accounting. You know, our finance office is basically trying to set up this account so that through using the Gatsby accounting standards, so that the city can seek sponsorships of the event, which is a city-run event. So, I'm in support of that accounting mechanism to hold the money for the sponsorships.
Okay.
President, I don't have a formal opportunity to speak. If there's some question that I can address, I can answer questions from the council. So if there's something, some issue that is outstanding, I'm more than willing to do that. I apologize that I was not at the committee meeting Monday night. I was dealing with a health issue with my eye and was advised by the doctor to just stay home that night.
Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Madam President. I support the spirit in which the resolution is written. I think that we all support anything that is going to drive business and enrich the quality of life for people that live in here in the city of Schenectady. However, I think that the language of the resolution that's been presented today is not the same language that was discussed at the committee meeting. So I think that the appropriate thing to do is to be to bring it back and then let's just have a conversation about it, to the mayor's point, where we can be a little clear, more clear about it and be making an informed decision. I don't think that this is something, as far as the event itself, that there's any disagreement on. I think we're actually pretty much aligned with it. I think the only issue is around the language being changed and then the why behind that happened. And initially, I remember Madam President raised some issues with the original language, and that seemed to be, I guess, correct because things have now changed. So we wanted to at least just have a clear understanding of why that happened, and I think the appropriate way to do that is to just bring it back to committee, have the conversation, and then, you know, if we all are on the same page, or it seems like we all can be, we'll pass it unanimously.
Mr. Mancini.
So, yeah, the language has changed, but the initiative, I think, is a very positive move for the city. I'd hate to delay it. The weather is, we are getting nice weather today. We have seen example of that. So I would support this to move this forward and bring these events to the downtown area. Bands on Broadway.
So, Mayor, I can say to you, there were a lot of questions. I don't know that we can answer them all tonight, because we actually, in the discussion, was asked to bring it back to committee, and then that changed. So, at this point in time, you know, we're at the point where we're ready to vote on that.
Well, if you vote this down, it's going to send a poor message, that this is a commitment from the city to do some administrative paperwork and financing for an event that's raised, at this point, thirty-some thousand dollars in private money. I assume, then, you don't want me to make commitments for Summer Night or for the Holiday Parade or other things that are far more extensive. But Summer Night, it's probably forty, fifty thousand dollars that we expend to support that. Holiday Parade is closer to a hundred thousand dollars. You know, this group is asking us to do a little bit of accounting, which is probably in the neighborhood of twenty-five hundred or three thousand dollars. And whether it's a trust and agency account or custodial account, it's just theatrics among the council here. It's really a poor showing, and I would ask that the council reconsider and act in a favorable manner in this legislation.
So, at this point in time, I'll ask the clerk to call the roll. Certainly, go right ahead.
I hear some discussion relating to change of language. It's simply that what used to be known as a trust and agency account is now simply called a custodial account. That's all. When we did further research, we found that the name currently is custodial account rather than trust and agency. That's why it says specifically in the resolution, custodial account, formerly known as a trust and agency account. So it's explained in the resolution why the language is slightly different from what was originally presented.
If you want to explain your vote when we get to that?
I'll ask a question.
You want to ask a question?
Yeah. About the event, maybe some more specifics, like who will be managing it.
Those were all questions that we had at the table that could not be answered. So, you know, we put those questions out there. We said, who's going to manage? Those were questions that we were told that we would get information back on. We did not get the information back on Thursday, which is what was, what said was going to happen to us by corporation council, the assistant corporation council. So. Yes, Ms. D'Turro.
Thank you. Mayor said you can answer questions. Mayor, who's providing these fans? How are these fans being chosen and how many weeks will it be? Do you have any answers?
So, I call a point of order. There are some people who are voting. I think I've got them. As you were voting, you can, like, add additional comments, or I think it's been a bunch and clear. Now we're proceeding the rest of this.
We are at the point where we have to take a vote at this point.
Thank you.
So, the vote is on whether or not to approve item number four, which is a resolution to establish, authorizing the city of Schenectady to establish a custodial account. That is what we're voting on. Okay. If the clerk could please read. Excuse me. Call the roll.
What is, what do you see out of order with the council having debate prior to a rule?
The council's not trying to debate. The council's trying to ask the mayor questions. That's very different than a debate. Debate is among council members.
Okay, I see that differently. However, in the meantime, I would like to address your comment relating to the corporation council. By sending you the resolution on Thursday, that answered your questions. If you had other questions, you could have asked them, but we satisfied our, what we said we would do by sending the resolution. We wouldn't send you a resolution that we didn't think was legal. And I want to start by the record.
Well, then, I just would like to say further, and we can watch the video, which I did do before we got here tonight, is that Mr. Mutuvernas specifically asked that if you would send us clarifying language about the trust and agency account versus a fiduciary account, and he said, yes, he would do that by Thursday. And so, the clarifying language, to me, does not come in the form of resolution. It should have, there should have been a clarification, as we are not going to have a T and A account, but we're going to be a fiduciary, and this is why, and then here's the new resolution. That was my expectation.
Okay, well, you could have said something about that then, but if you read the resolution, we specifically put the language formerly known as.
I see that.
That would explain to you why the language is different.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So, again, we're voting on item So again, we're voting on item number four, a resolution authorizing the city of Schenectady to establish a custodial account. If the clerk could please call the roll.
Ms. Detoura?
Yes. So what you're saying now is I can speak before my vote?
You can explain your vote, absolutely.
Oh, okay. Anyway, yes, I'm voting in favor of it for reasons I just said, and I'd like the mayor to clarify a few things for me as far as how long this program's going to run, who will be playing there, whatever information he has to pass forward to us now. My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Farley?
Again, I think that this is one of the things where this, the process, you know, there's questions about the process, and they, and we have a responsibility to make an informed decision as a council. This doesn't have to turn into a political football. This is not something that we need to, I really don't think our decisions should be classified as poorly. I think that that is disingenuous and misrepresentation of what we're trying to accomplish here. Based on clearly what Mr. Mancini began to say, there were some, there were some questions. Mr. Detoura highlighted that there were some questions that she'd like the mayor to answer. Again, I would caution us not to turn this event that I think, as far as the event goes, I think that there's unanimous support for said event. I think that we are talking about the function of the council and the function of the city and how it operates in relation to that event. And I think that that is a worthy question, and really caution us not to turn this into a political tug-of-war that is just not necessary, you guys. I think that we all agree about why events like this are a positive thing, but also we have a responsibility to do that within the appropriate parameters, and those aren't ridiculous questions to be asked, and they're questions that we're obligated to do so. So with that being said, I will vote no for now until it comes back to the appropriate place, as which is the committees where we can have that robust conversation and we can all pass it out with a unanimous yes. So I vote no.
Mr. Mancini?
Well, I think, you know, I guess there are a lot of, still some questions folks have around this event, and I'm marrying what Councilman Damani said about us being unanimous in this. I would like those, an opportunity to have more information and those questions answered. However, if it is, and I, you know, it's frustrating that we can't get any more information in this moment so as not to delay this and get this event and initiative moving forward. So I'm also kind of torn in that direction that we, is this, we're talking about another two week, two weeks more, if that's going to interfere with moving this forward in any way. We don't have answers to that. So at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no and hope to get more information in the next committee meeting.
Ms. Patrick?
I'm staying with my yes vote because I think that, again, it's not about all the details of the event. What this resolution is doing is allowing our finance office to use a simple accounting mechanism to establish an account into which the funds of sponsorship of this event will be put. So I vote yes, we should set up the account.
Mr. Williams?
So I would say in the simplicity of her statement, there were a number of questions and back and forth at our council meeting, and as all of those in presence at this conversation and watching at home, there were additional questions that were levied at the table. I think to Mr. Farley's point, it's important to make sure information flows the correct way. I too would mimic the sentiment of not labeling this as a poor reflection of anything. I think for me personally, just wanting to have a clear understanding, as when I have interactions with residents in the community, I myself need to be confident that I'm leaving with an accurate reflection of what we're doing. And at this point, I did not, and I still do not. So to Mr. Farley's point, it's an obligation for me to vocalize that position, and I would say anyone wishing to respond negatively to that comment, I think we need to understand the importance of vocalizing when we are unclear and then making sure we are being transparent and inclusive to bring those people up to speed in an appropriate manner. And I would say in the future, at least for myself, having that clarification, as Ms. Barash's statements were very insightful. However, I've just received that, this, at this current juncture. So having had that prior to this, maybe I would be able to make a different determination, but that is not the case at the moment.
Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you. So we had a lot of discussion in committee, and there were a lot of questions that were raised, and we passed it out of committee as a trust and agency account. That is what was passed out of the committee. So when I, I raised the question that whether a trust and agency account is something that we could even do anymore, and I referred to the Gatsby eighty-four, which is the government, which governs governmental accounting, and was told that it would be looked into and then would come back to us, the information, they would look at it because our finance chair, excuse me, not our finance chair, our finance commissioner said that it was okay to set up that account, but that Mr. O'Brien said that he would look into it and get back to us on Thursday with the information. That did not happen. So there were a lot of questions raised about, I'm going to tell you specifically, I am not really clear why the city is taking this, on this fiduciary role for private businesses. And I, you know, I asked how many restaurants were in it, were in, and there just weren't any questions, and those questions weren't answered. We asked about sponsorships, and they weren't there. The questions, the answers weren't there. Asked who was organizing, which was happening tonight. So let me just be clear. I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's a great idea. And none, but none of the, what we're talking about now was in the resolution. None of that was clarified at the meeting, and we asked those particular questions. So I think we need that information, and I definitely want to know, would like to know if we are, we're playing, using this role for anybody else in terms of fiduciary. I asked if there were any trust and agency accounts within the city, and that wasn't answered. And it was stated here about creating revenue, and if it's, if we're only playing the role of fiduciary, then there is no revenue to the city for that. I just want to make that clear. Our goal is just to use, to play the role of handling the funds for a different group. So it's not about returning away money for the city. So having said all that, I vote no. So the measure fails four to two. It will go back to committee. Next, we have privilege of the floor regarding general city business. And I have four people signed up to speak. The first person is Anthony Carata. Anthony Carata?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam President. Now, earlier this month, I came here to speak on what I believe, my opinion, because clearly a council member didn't understand what I was getting at, where I stated before I spoke that I had no problem with a certain community, someone's sexual orientation, or how they present themselves. Now, Councilmember Farley, clearly you didn't understand where I was coming from, okay? When you said your themes, you're at the end of me.
Sir, can you address the chair? Thank you.
Two, yeah, two weeks ago. Some themes I agree with and some themes I disagree with, okay? I just, I agree with the fact that, about the mental health issues and the suicide issues in said community because everybody deals with that regardless of what community you deal with. Mental health issues, suicide issues. Where I disagree with the theme that pride saves lives, it does not, okay? I disagree with you on that. Now, I had talked to a friend in regards to what I said last, earlier this month about the age restriction here in parade events. I still recommend the council doing that, but if it's going to be like a day event, which I believe Sunday is down there, they park from twelve to seven, I believe, depending on the weather, because I believe it's going to be raining that day, where certain hours of the day have where organizations inform the general public and families with information. That way, families can have the information to have conversations with their children. So I know children are going to bring up, have questions with certain friends in certain communities. That way, parents can have the right information to have a conversation, and also to benefit the general public, because that way we can have conversations going, we can have better understanding. And if there is adult entertainment, have it in the evening when there's no families around. Now, the thing is that I believe Councilman Farley also said, what I said about how the sexualized adult behavior happening with children and young beings getting emotionally traumatized by that doesn't happen. Why do you think in certain cities, San Francisco, Portland, St. Louis, where they have these events, where major corporations are not pulling out of sponsorship, as in Target and Hager Bush, because certain behaviors happen? I don't mean to be graphic here, but I try to say what I can. And the pride in these three cities and other major cities, you have people walking butt naked in the streets. You have people urinating in the parade, they're urinating spectators, okay? And even here, I was, I get emails from the paper, I was saw some pictures of the events when they had drag queens up there tending their.
Your time has expired, sir.
Yeah.
Your time has expired, sir.
Touched in their private areas.
Your time has expired, sir.
Right.
Thank you.
I don't mean to be too graphic there, but that exactly goes down to somebody's.
Your time has expired, sir. Thank you. You're fin, you don't have any more time. Christian Ortega?
All right, some general brief comments regarding the Schenectady poet laureate choice. I know that the comment period is already over, so I just wanted to share some information from the poetry role that I've been participating in for the over twenty years. So first, I want to commend the city council for this effort to make this choice. I understand it's been a while that this has been in the works. So I've been following the news articles in the Daily Gazette, and I, the last one was about the guidelines, which I think are really on point. And whoever you do choose, I just hope that it's somebody who represents all of Schenectady, who resides in Schenectady and walks these streets and encounters the people. And I've been to, been very active in the poetry scene in New York City, in Hudson Valley, and in Schenectady and Albany. So I could tell you, there's a lot of different types of poetry readings, some as wild as a biker bar and some as dowdy as, you know, a symposium. So there's also, by that extension, there's also different types of poets. So whoever is the Schenectady poet laureate, it would be great if it was somebody who could speak to all the residents of the city, and this is going to be a precedent-setting choice, and it will set the tone going forward for the next Schenectady poet laureate. So Godspeed and good luck, and I hope the best candidate wins, and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to apologize, there are two people that signed up, but someone crushed your names off. Is there someone here? No Yvonne here? How about James Semino? No? Okay. Colin McNamara? Oops, I'm sorry, there's somebody before you. Crystal?
Thank you for graciously giving me your spot. Hello again, Madam President.
Mr. McNamara?
I, it's good to see you again. I accidentally ran into Ms. Porterfield on the street the other day, actually, and I recall that you knew you knew me from somewhere but couldn't remember, so this was where. And because I can't miss an opportunity, always be closing, I took the opportunity during the brief walk up State Street to, again, give my good cause eviction law pitch. Now, of course, there I was simply out for, I was going to dinner, actually, at the time and happened to walk past you. But this time I brought stats that I don't normally carry in my pocket at any given time. So I just wanted to preface this by saying, when the good cause eviction law passed at the state level, it automatically took effect in New York City. But everywhere else, what we wanted was a opt-out system where it would be the default and municipalities could opt out if they chose to. What we got was an opt-in system. It was a compromise. It wasn't really what advocates wanted, but it's, it's the law that we have now. So it requires that every municipality must choose outside of New York City for it to apply to us. This does permit municipalities to decide, is this right for us? Maybe they can look around at their community and say, we don't really need this. And, you know, by comparison, I pulled up some recent eviction statistics. These are from 2022, mind you, but to show you the kind of difference for maybe the different types of communities that might say we need this or we don't, just across the river, our neighbors in Scotia, in the 12302 area code, is averaging one eviction filing for every nine-hundred-and-twenty-two renter households. This is largely because seventy-five percent of residences in that zip code own their homes. But of the twenty-five, roughly a quarter of them that do, there's one eviction filing for every nine-hundred-and-twenty-two households. Come across the river to our side, and in the 12304 area code, there is one eviction filing for every eight households. Out of that, of those households, over fifty percent have children and forty-two percent are single mothers. In the Stockade area, the area around where I live, 12305 area code, there is one eviction for every ten households. It doesn't get better. Well, this one's slightly better. No, that's Rotterdam. Okay, so here's where it gets really bad. Over in Hamilton Hill, the 12307 zip code, there is one eviction filing for every six-point-eight households in that area. Of them, over sixty percent have children, sixty-eight percent are single mothers. And in the 12308 zip code, more of the north side and the Union area, there is one eviction filing for every nine-point-five households. This is an epidemic. I got a case on my desk this morning, and I was struck by the fact that the index number for this eviction case was eleven-hundred, just shy of eleven-hundred. It was about ten, I can't tell you. But it was just shy of eleven-hundred, which means that there's been, it's not even the end of May yet, there's been nearly eleven-hundred eviction filed in the city of Schenectady just since then. It's catchy.
You summarize.
It is, it continues to grow, and the good cause eviction law would permit at least, it's not going to stop every eviction, and the goal is not to eradicate eviction entirely as a legal regime, but it would stop the ones that quite simply didn't need to happen, the ones that were for no cause whatsoever, the ones that were simply because a property owner wants somebody out for whatever private reasons they have. It would at least stop those, and it would keep these, most of which being households with children, from being in shelters. It's a simple step and one we should take. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal Dionne, is that your last?
No, it's Crystal Doin, sorry.
Crystal, Crystal Doin, Doin?
Doin. D-O-I-N. Like doing without the G. That's me. So you beat me to it. Initially, I was just going to introduce myself, Crystal Doin. I was born and raised right here in Schenectady, St. Clair's to be exact. I currently have the pleasure of living in the town of Rotterdam. You may be asking why the introduction or why I'm even relevant to you all. I am simply here to personally introduce myself to this committee. I have tried to reach out to the mayor on several occasions, and I have fallen on deaf ears. I have been ignored. I have been completely invisible to this community where I was born and raised. And I stand here today as a product of complete injustices of a failing judicial system and stuck in a vortex of political rhetoric. Mayor McCarthy, I disagree with the fact of stating that this is the lowest level of government. We are the voice of the people, we are where it starts, and we are. We are the voice of the people, we are where it starts, and we are where it meets in the middle, and so forth. There needs to be an emphasis on making a change. When we are in a position of power, we need to utilize this meeting twice a month as a roll call to put on paper as if we did our job. That needs to end. This is an outcry of gaps between housing programs and mental health, all of which has truly been neglected for years, which leads to higher crime rates. I speak directly from experience, I have fallen through the cracks more times than that, directly from the police of Schenectady County here. I have been laughed at, I have been dismissed, and I stand here yet again, every time I have been pushed down, I get back up. I speak directly, like I said, from experience and falling through the cracks. Mental health is at an all-time low in this community, which you touched on before, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Such as local programs as SCSC, which is supposed to be a resource, where we have mental health professionals who are using us as just for financial gains and not doing what is right for mental health purposes. I have, and I speak before you, I've sitting in a room, tried to commit suicide on a number of occasions for the last four years. I have thrown up, gotten back up the next day, and I've gone to work. I work right downtown in Uptham, the consultants. And what once was a city that you could send your youth to a corner store no longer exists without fear. I remember as a child running up to the Denny's across from Elmer Avenue and grabbing a slushie at the ripe age of eight years old. Was that my time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I declare the public comment of city business closed. At this time, entertain any miscellaneous business of the council. Ms. Patrick?
Just want to announce, remind folks that we do have a couple of good events coming up in the city. The Kids Art Festival is June 7th from 12 to 4:00, and also Jazz on J is about to start as well on June 5th. It runs from June 5th to August 28th at noon time in J Square now, and so there'll be great music, you know, every Thursday during Jazz on J. Thank you.
Mr. Toro?
Thank you. I'd actually like to personally invite everyone here and everyone listening to the Sadie Anthony's Festa, which is held June 6th, 7th, and 8th on Seward Place. The street will be blocked off, there'll be lots of Italian and Spanish food, three good bands every night, and I'd like to just ask everyone to stop by and say hello. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farley?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate everyone coming out to speak tonight. I think it's important, when people come forth, that we listen with the intention to really hear what people are saying, and I would just like to say that, to be clear, what I said last time when I was up here around pride saving lives is exactly what I meant. It absolutely does, it's absolutely true, and I appreciate the clarification from which the gentleman was trying to clarify what he was trying to say. I would caution anyone to tie their moral compass to the examples of large corporations such as Target, et cetera, but I do think that I can understand why someone might look to the, to them, to a set example of like where you want to be morally. I can understand why, but I happen to disagree with that as a tactic. I just think that, again, pride does save lives, and I think that what we hear today was people talking about and really highlighting the impact of the decisions that we make, and as people who are in decision-making seats, we should never, never separate our decisions from the consequences and the way that impacts people's lives. So I just, again, thank everyone for coming and speaking so vulnerable. It's not something that we take for granted, as a council member, I certainly don't, and I think I speak for the entire council when I say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I'm surprised at the action of the council not moving forward, the one account, the two groups that have higher visibility, where the city has acted as fiscal agent before, was the old air program. We currently act as a fiscal agent for Music Haven. The groups that are lined up, the other thing, this is scheduled to start on June 12th, so that, you know, you're cramping the whole thing to, we just give the list of bands that are lined up to play here, they're going to be in the city parking lot, the 12th is going to start off with the Smoos, Ill Funk on June 20, that's on June 19th, June 26th, Local 11, July 10th, the Dirt Cheap Band, July 17th, The Ultimates, July 24th, The Big Empty, WABY Radio, July 31st, Blues House Rockers, and August 7th, Little Funk, and they're also trying to actually get a bigger name band for that event. What I would ask you to consider is not to adjourn this meeting, but to recess so that you can reconvene and move forward in a manner that supports this activity. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate the additional information, it wasn't what we had, we did ask for that, and the Director of Operations came, and she said, the only thing she knew was that it was going to be on a Thursday night, so there were a lot of questions.
And Madam President, I apologize for that.
Sir, I'm...
I had an issue with my eye that developed that day, and you could have called me in the interim.
So I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not blaming you for anything, I'm simply saying this is what happened at the meeting, we did ask for information. So we made, decisions were made based on what we, what we had, and it really wasn't, yes, I must say that there was a lot of questions about the venue, who it was going to be, et cetera, but the main issue was around the discussion whether we're doing a trust and agency account in terms of what was passed out of committee or the fiduciary. So that was the main point of discussion, and usually, I'm just going to say, I send you emails often, and I don't get responses, so I only have the opportunity to ask Corporation Council or whoever's presenting it to provide the information, which is what would happen at that meeting. So at this point in time, if June 12th is the date, there is still an opportunity to have this come before the council, again, on June 9th, that would still be before the date when this event begins. So, and so you're asking us to recess and then convene another council meeting? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, asking a more timely manner. We'd like to enter into contracts with this. So you want things to be three days before it's supposed to start?
No, I would love to have had the information last week's, no, that is not what I want at all. I did not even, we were never presented with information, there was a time constraint on this. None of that was presented to the council. We only made our decisions based on the information that we had. At this point, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mr. Farley, seconded by Mr. Williams. Alls in favor? Aye. We're adjourned, thank you.